All some meeting to order, everybody stand for the pledge please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll. O'Connor.
Here.
Marsette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
Bazil.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Atkins Hackett.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Alright, first thing up is we have a new officer, police officer coming on board, so if you would please come up. Shane, Sue, Jeff. Around here.
I, Shane Clement.
I, Shane Clement.
Having been appointed as patrol officer.
Having been appointed as patrol officer.
For the city of Hudson Police Department.
For the city of Hudson Police Department.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Officer Clement comes to us, born and raised from the Hudson community here, spent his entire life here in Hudson, so it's nice to see him back with our agency to begin the next chapter of his life. Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Next we have the presentation of lifesaver award by Chief Willem's.
On Saturday, July 28th, 2019, about 12:44 PM, Hudson officers were dispatched to the Taco Bell in Hudson for a male subject, unconscious and not breathing. Sergeant Hartman was the first to arrive on scene and found a male subject on the floor of the restaurant, unconscious, not breathing, and very pale. Sergeant Hartman quickly determined the subject did not or did have a pulse, and was being attended to by a registered nurse who happened to be there. Sergeant Hartman asked if there are any bystanders that saw or knew what happened, and asked if the subject had overdosed on a drug. Nobody there knew what had happened. Sergeant Hartman did a quick examination of the subject, and based on his training and experience believed the subject had injected himself with a narcotic and indeed overdosed. Sergeant Hartman retrieved his department issued naloxone hydrochloride, more commonly known as Narcan, a narcotic antidote, and provided the dose to the subject. After this dose, no notable response was observed. Officer Potter arrived soon after and administered her dose of Narcan to the subject, who then began to make some respiratory effort. However, Officer Adkey had arrived on scene along with St. Croix EMS, and administered a third dose of Narcan. After the third dose, subject regained consciousness, and St. Croix EMS transported the subject to the Hudson Hospital, where the subject later that day was able to walk out of the hospital on his own power. Every day we in law enforcement encounter people having some of their worst days. Our community depends on us to help and protect them in those times of need. There are times when officers, just doing what they do every day, do things that are out of the ordinary and above their call for duty. In those times, I believe those officers need to be recognized for their efforts. It's clear in this case that without the quick response and call to action, this subject would not have survived. I applaud the efforts of these officers and those of St. Croix EMS. I am honored to award you all with this lifesaving award. Thank you for what you do every day. And then I believe St. Croix EMS also has something for them.
So these officers are also being recognized by Regions Hospital, with a lifesaving award signed by Dr. Froscone.
Excellent. Thank you guys so much, and job well done. Alright, next we have a public hearing on a zoning map amendment from PCD-1 Plan Commercial District to PUB, Public and Comprehensive Plan Use Land Designation, from General Commercial to Public 2001 Ward Avenue, City of Hudson. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this? Anyone who would like to comment on this? Anyone like to comment on this?
Move to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved. Public hearing is closed. Discussion possible action to approve ordinance 1818 amending the zoning map from PCD-1 Plan Commercial District to PUB, Public and Comprehensive Plan Use Land Designation from General Commercial to Public at 2001 Ward Avenue, City of Hudson.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Got a motion second to suspend the rules, roll call. Marsette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
Bazil.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Atkins Hackett.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
Move to adopt ordinance 18-18.
Second.
Got a motion second to adopt. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved. Next on the agenda is, or are, however you want to look at that, comments from, and suggestions from the citizens. Anybody like to make a comment? Anybody? Tony, you gonna talk about? You might as well.
I wasn't good to say, I thought my blessing to you would be to say nothing.
No, I think this merits some comment.
Tony Bull from the Hudson Inclusion Alliance, I want to thank everybody for showing up yesterday. We had over, some counted, 350 people. We weren't sure how many folks were going to come, but the longer table got longer and longer and longer, and we had all kinds of communities, all kinds of religion, all kinds of food, all kinds of things going on, and we just want to thank you for your attention and your concern, and we hope to do this again some other time. So, that's all I'm going to say, thank you.
Alright, thanks Tony. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? We'll close that portion of the agenda. Discussion possible action on consent agenda items.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of July 23rd, 2018. To approve claims in the amount of $753,516.71. Detailed information is available in the clerk's office. Contention upon payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city and successful completion of a background check. Approve issuance of one regular operator license for the period of August 7th, 2018 to June 30th, 2020 to Anthony Silty, and approve one temporary operator license for the Heart of the River event on September 14th to Catherine Wright. To approve a temporary Class B, Class B license to the St. Croix River Association for the Heart of River event on September 14th, 2018. To approve, the next one was the next one, that was from the last meeting, sorry. To approve the finance director's six month report for a period ending June 30th, 2018. That is all.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve consent agenda, roll call. Marsette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
Bazil.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Atkins Hackett.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved, consent agenda's approved. Update from Urban Forestry, I'm sorry, update from Urban Forestry Board Chair regarding Emerald Ash Borer.
Brian's with it.
Ken Holman, Chair of the Urban Forestry Board and 22 year resident of Hudson at 1020 Fillmore Street. And, well Brian set that up. We got a notification from DAPCAP, which is the Wisconsin Department of Ag, Trade and Consumer Protection Regulatory Agency that monitors for Emerald Ash Borer. Officially found Emerald Ash Borer. Officially found Emerald Ash Borer in a commercial area at Crestview and Carmichael, in a fast food restaurant parking lot. Found out subsequently that another find was in east of the state park, and those make perfect sense because this pest is moved primarily by firewood. So, someone on vacation stopping at McDonald's probably released that unexpectedly. And also east of the state park, there's a lot of firewood moving in and out of there. So. Anyway, the Urban Forestry Board has been working to prepare the city and its residents for this past four, at least eight years, not more. And, what I wanted to share with you tonight was, and I've been asked to give a little bit of an update on what the city's doing, what the public works employees are doing, and what the, we want the citizens to know with our web information. So, over the past eight years, we've received five different grants from the DNR, one of which, the earliest of which was to take it in full inventory to public trees, and I'll record it, there's a little summary in the PowerPoint. But, we proceeded to institute Emerald Ash Borer plan that was written by the consultant that conducted the inventory, and she made some recommendations, assessment of the ash trees. So, this aerial photo shows the red dots, those are the public ash trees that were inventoried both along streets and in parks. Total of, and the next is a summary of this. 1,400 public ash trees, which is 25% of the total public ash tree population. Consultant reported that they were overall very well maintained trees over the years. 155 in parks, 12% of park tree population, and 1,241 on streets, 30% of the street tree population, overall 25% of the public tree population. There were some mature, 30 mature, high risk ash that were priority for removal, those are long gone. We've removed approximately 200 of the 1,400 public ash trees in parks and along streets, based on their condition, their interference with utility lines, there being other trees around it and just being misformed. So, we continue to identify trees that are either in conflict with utilities, those are mostly gone, but ones that won't be missed. Smaller trees that are next to larger trees, and will not be missed. The consultant did the inventory, recommended that we treat 1,095, that would have been 75%, 78%. We decided to go with a goal of about 10% ash trees, treating, public ash trees to treat, and that is what we're trying to achieve. We use a chemical that is injected systemically into the tree, protects it from feeding, kills the beetles when they feed on the leaves. Those trees, the chemical is good for a three year period, and so we're treating 40 trees, roughly 40 public trees, ash trees a year. The, I've been asked a lot about what it costs, and roughly, it goes on a diameter inch for private citizens to hire a private consultant. A tree service company would be in the neighborhood of $7 to $10 an inch. Our public employees that are injecting the trees, it costs the city about $5, less than $5 a diameter inch. So this first, and you got this in your packet, this is a decision guide that we developed to help the residents determine first that they have an ash tree, and second, make that basic decision of, do I want to keep it or not? And then, it leads them in either case to list their opportunities to contact a professional, and then list some other considerations they might make to treat or not treat their tree, have it removed. And then these next couple slides are the actual publications that are online, and you have in your packet a screenshot of the Emerald Ash Borer information from our webpage. So this first identification is just how to identify ash trees. Then, is my ash tree worth treating from the extension service? Answers those basic questions. And then finally, if I decide I want to protect my tree, what does that involve? What do I need to know about it, so I can talk intelligently to a consultant? And I gotta add this, that part of our, a big part of our effort, of course, is to make the urban forest more diverse, and we've realized a great deal of savings from this gravel bed system that we use to enhance bare root trees, as Tom has been just ecstatic about that, and I think we'll probably engage him in his retirement. So, I will answer any questions, but from the press release that I drafted, and was sent out to the Hudson Observer, I assume that it'll probably be in the paper this week. Our focus is going to be on ensuring public safety, diversifying the mix of trees in Hudson, and managing the impact to the extent that the city possibly can. So, our Urban Forestry Board meets on the 15th of August. One of our discussion points will be a proposed budget, and some suggestions about staffing needed. But this is a time for the city to make that necessary investment in further protecting our ash trees on both public and private property, and we'll do our best to respond to the public. I'll be working closely with Deb and Amanda on developing most frequently asked questions and answers to those to supplement the website. So I'll answer any questions at this time.
There is the web information Ken is talking about, right on the front page of the city's website, there is a link on the left, so you don't have to go digging for it, I put it right out, so they'll be able to, if you click on that, all the information that Ken has discussed is right out there.
Nice job Ken, I appreciate that. I personally have several questions to ask. And again, congratulations on getting your arms around this situation. Having lived through the decimation of the elm population in St. Paul, I know how devastating this can be. And, so, what is a mature ash tree, what does that mean?
A mature ash tree is one that gets to a certain size, you know, it's kind of arbitrary. 15 inch diameter, they mature probably at about 50 years of age, but can continue to grow, and I can't offhand tell you the mature, the maximum size that they get, but it's pretty extensive. Some of the largest ones are down on Lakefront Park along the river.
So are they more susceptible then, when they're mature, or?
Not necessarily.
I know you said you identified mature trees, and they were the first ones to go, so I just was curious what that meant.
They were mature and in poor shape, poor condition. Those are the ones that we identified first for removal. So.
Alright.
That mature age is probably 50 plus.
So, how, the injections, they last three years, how long are we going to have to do this?
Well, you need to continue them every three years until the pest is no longer around, and that may take, and this is, you know, just an estimate, 20 to 30 years. The longer we, the stronger we, an effort we make, the longer we drag that out and spread out the costs, 20, 30 years, I estimate. And in the meantime, using systems like the gravel bed system, engaging citizens, we've developed some good relations with Rotary, both to help plant trees and mulch trees, water them. I think we can see, realize some very good growth, and have a mature understory of diversity of trees in the next five to 10 years. And I did just retire, tomorrow is my last day with the DNR in Minnesota.
Congratulations.
So I look forward to. Wearing this vest more, you'll see me out there with my reflective hat. Growing young trees and getting them started the right way.
Where is the biggest risk, where is the biggest infestation near us?
St. Paul is where it was originally found in Minnesota in 2009, and it's gotten to the point now where they, it's out of hand. And they, there was an article in the Star Tribune about how they don't have enough money to reforest because they're spending all their money on removals. So we're trying to get ahead of the game, not only in protecting some, the best, but also removing them, you know, as regularly as we can, and then notifying the public, and this announcement from the state is a great opportunity to get the word out to the public. So, we'll follow up the Hudson Star Observer article that we expect on Thursday with the announcement of a public meeting. We've put on two of them in the last two years, the last eight years. We'll have another public meeting in conjunction with extension.
So I clicked on the links that I saw out there, and I read all about the identification and things like that. I did not, as far as the firewood, I didn't see the answers to questions that I would have. So, is it, is it the actual burning of the firewood? With the elm trees, if you burned it, you know, I can't remember what spores or whatever went in the,
Right.
Into the atmosphere, is it the same here, is it just that they, if you bring wood in, they have a tendency to move on and?
Right, with the disease, Dutch elm disease, it was a fungus that went through the vascular system, and so it was easily transported that way. And, but with Emerald Ash Borer, it is a beetle, and I encourage you to click on that 30 second video to learn the life cycle of this pest. It cuts through the, as it weaves back and forth digging an egg chamber for the larvae to grow in. It actually cuts off the flow of water and nutrients to the crown of the tree, but it happens over a three, four, five year period. Four or five years is usually the first, the time after an infestation that you first notice the thinning of the crown, the sprouts on the trunk, the woodpecker activity up high in the tree. And that's the thing that, that's the kind of information and task that we want to set all of the public works folks to engage in, in helping us monitor that, and with the citizens as well.
So, but again, is it the actual burning of the tree, is that a problem? Or is it just bringing trees from some of these areas over here?
It's bringing the wood, because the larvae is usually the stage that it over winters in, and that is transported in firewood, moved from place to place. And, so, it's, in order to render that firewood not dangerous for creating an infestation, you need to slice down below the bark, it's just not practical. So we, the states have tried to limit the, put a quarantine on the firewood, but just recently, the state of Wisconsin put on a statewide quarantine, so there's a free movement between counties. And this will actually help in the utilization of this elm, this ash material that we hope to market and recover some of the cost. It's happening in the Twin Cities. Down by Madison is a great network of businesses that are developing to utilize this wood, to make park furniture, to do some very fancy furniture. Anyway, more on utilization to come, but right now, most of what we produce, generate is taken to district energy and ground up for burning for energy.
Not baseball bats?
Not baseball bats. They're going to maple on the baseball bats.
Are they really?
Yeah.
Alright, I'm sorry to have.
That's alright.
Anopolized time here, anybody else, any other questions? Ken, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Alright, discussion possible action on lever of engagement for Cooley Road retaining wall.
I don't know that anybody's here, Jim.
No, it looks like it. So, we have a new estimate of 15-1 and 15-9 from the two different engineering firms. Our recommendation is that we accept the 15-1 engineering bid and proceed with that. I stopped by a walk that, by that wall just to see what it looked like, and it looks to me like the entire wall from, that section, from one end of that to the other is going to have to be replaced. It looks like it's all starting to sag, just from an eyeball situation. So we'll see, but I think it's going to get more expensive rather than less, and the engineering work may be significant because of all the water that's present. And it looks like, from the documentation I've seen, like the city has the responsibility for the replacement of this wall. It was installed to, it was put in so we could install the sidewalk. That's the documents I've seen. And so, unless there's something else that comes to bear, the owners, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but if we put it there, if it was put in to the city, so the sidewalk could exist, replacement is our responsibility.
Well, I'm not certain, because it was, I just, based on the issue sheet, it looked like it was, since it was part of the sidewalk project, it was assessed at that time against, I think under our policy, 50/50, part city, part, based on front footage of the abutting property owners. It was necessary for the sidewalk, so it was a cost of the sidewalk installation. I need to look at the policy to see what it says in terms of repair and replacement, but it's possible that a portion of it, if it fits within the policy, could be assessed. Now at that time, it looks like the city got a grant, and maybe there's some funding there, I don't know. But if it's part of the sidewalk, if our policy includes repair and replacement, perhaps 50% could be assessed. So we'll need to look into that.
Okay. Is there a recommendation here?
Recommended that we accept the bid from Bolton and Meek. Bolton and Meek, thank you, for $15,001, for the engineering work.
Okay, is there a second?
Do we want to include any of that review of policy?
Well, no, I mean, that's not something the engineer, I mean, I can look at the policy, and then we actually, if the council were to consider assessing it, we would need to go through that process and get an engineering report, so I think we should certainly tell the engineer that that's a possibility.
Still have to go out for a bid, and at that time, we could do a special assessment, yes.
But I'll certainly look at the policy to see if it includes, replacement is really what's involved here, right? Not just maintenance. And does that involve replacing the sidewalk as well, is there damage to the sidewalk?
I did not notice any particular damage, it seemed smooth, and nothing's out of whack there. Just the wall just fell over. I would second.
Motion is second, any further discussion?
I just had one question, Jim. So it was a recommendation to, I think when we discussed it last, we talked about, could we do a smaller section versus the whole entire wall? Was it the recommendation of doing the entire wall?
Well, I don't think, I didn't, I don't, I don't think we know that yet. We're not going to know until we get the engineering work done. But it looks to me like if the rest of the wall is leaning, and it's, and there are distinct points, endpoints, that we would be foolish to replace part of it and not, you know, and in five years, who knows how many years, the rest of the wall's going to fall over. We should probably do it all at once, so it looks the same. It may be a different construction than what we currently have. That's some of the thinking that I'm hearing. So, we won't know until we really get the engineering work done on what, where we would have to limit or do the work in order to prevent, replace and prevent further, further decay.
Can I ask you a question, is anyone from the city?
Has anyone from the city talked to the property owners about, I don't know what the name of that is, the sculpture above that or is, this is the same?
The spring.
Yeah, I don't know what you call that. They spray the water and?
Well, there's a natural spring there and then they take, they're taking the water and putting it up.
So I guess my question is, and I'm not an engineer, but does that have something to do with the, the decay in that, that structure to me?
I don't have, don't know that.
It's possible, but I think we'd have to, we'd expect that of the engineering...
Right.
...report. Is, is running additional, taking up it out of the ground? What are we doing? What effect is that having? Just...
Right, I guess, I, I mean, I think there are two different things. One is I think there needs to be some work to fix the present problem, but I think there needs to be some conversation to prevent future erosion too. And if that's something that's...
Absolutely. But that's what I would expect, you know, the engineering say, hey, you know, you're doing this, you really shouldn't because you run a water cross, you know, whatever they're, they're saying is happening when that, when that occurs.
Right.
Does the engineer know about that situation?
I'm not certain, but we'll make sure.
Yeah, I, without a public works, who's going, do you know who's going to be contacting the engineer?
We're both writing it down, Jim, so hopefully.
So I, I mean, I think that's a good point, that preventive, you know, what are we going to do in the future to prevent, if you can determine the cause and how are we going to avoid it in the future?
Okay, anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion, possible action on, oh, I'm sorry.
Item ten A was removed and will be addressed at the next meeting.
Discussion, possible action on, discussion of possible action on possible action.
I got extra words in there, sorry.
Setting a public hearing date for September fourth, twenty eighteen for zoning map amendment from AR Agricultural Residential, RM one, multiple family residential for a thirteen point five seven acre ML portion of St. Croix County Tax Parcel, zero four zero dash zero one zero two five dash seven zero dash zero zero zero, Land Devco of Hudson LLC.
This is simply just to set the public hearing date.
So move.
Now, motion second to approve, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion, possible action on appointment of Director of Public Works in Parks.
The Finance Committee along with two members of the Public Works Committee interviewed candidates and selected Mike Lamarraz, who is currently the Operations Manager for the City of New Richmond, serves as the next Public Works Director. So just looking for confirmation of that, he's scheduled to start next Monday.
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion second to approve. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion, possible action on development of RFP for construction management service, services for a new fire station. Chief?
Honorable Mayor, Council members, this is just kind of the next step of the building process. Now, really best practice is hiring a construction manager. It's what basically everyone is doing. It's a little bit different than, you know, the past, what you think of as a general contractor. This is a process where they kind of work more with you instead of a, kind of a, I don't want to say adversarial, but it's not contract based. So it's, Mike Johnson also kind of recommended this too, along with everybody we've talked to recently is this is what's, is best practice and that's what's happening. So we put together an RFP to interview whoever wants, I guess, narrow it down to about three, final, for final three, to select one to bring back to the council and recommend for the project. So we're just basically kind of gathering information and trying to pick one.
And again, this is like a third party that will work with the city just to kind of oversee the construction, is that right?
And so what kind of the difference is, is general contractor, everything goes out for bid and you're locked into the bid. The, the construction manager works with the city, does the same and gets bids on everything, but allows a little more flexibility along the way. So if you run into some issues or problems, you're not getting hit with change orders and that along the way, you're kind of, can adapt and, and be a little bit more flexible and really kind of working with you. And then they're kind of also a, a third party to work with the architect, make sure everything's going smooth in that direction too, so.
And you're looking for just the authorization to...
To set the, we, we have created the RFP, Mike Johnson, myself created the RFP. We sent a copy with Kathy and really it's just, we're looking for qualifications, similar project size of projects and, you know, that. And then we'll probably use the same group or similar group that we use for picking the architects and bring them in to interview and then bring our recommendation back.
Okay. I'll move to go out for RFP on construction management services for the new fire station.
I'll second.
Got a motion second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thanks Scott. Discussion, possible action on appointment to Park Board.
In your packet, Mayor O'Connor is recommending the appointment of Brian Ekholm of six fourteen Laurel Avenue to serve on the Park Board and the term will expire next April. It's due, fill out the remainder of the term of Vicki Erickson, who stepped down.
Can you tell us something about Brian? I, I've never even heard of him.
Brian lives on Laurel. He has, there were people that when we were putting out different postings for openings on, on boards, we didn't get a whole heck of a lot of people that were volunteering. Brian was one of those and he contacted me and he said, I definitely am interested in serving the city and if there is anything that I could do, let me know. So when this opened up, I gave him a call and said, we've got an opening and you're just one of a few names out here that we've got. So are you interested? And he said, yes, absolutely. He would love to serve the city.
So was this advertised?
This one was not. We kind of stopped doing that because we just weren't getting responses.
I thought we were going to get a, an email, each of the council members would get an email when there was an opening so that we could get some...
Don't know that policy was, that those policy was set, but I mean...
Okay, we talked about it, but I don't, yeah, I don't remember that it was set, but I think it would be a good idea to do that in the future.
I can do that, yes.
So, does he have any experience with, not that it, most, most people with parks don't...
He grew up in the playgrounds.
So he's from Hudson.
You know, I don't actually know if he was born and raised here, but just talking with him, he seemed to have, clearly have a keen interest in helping with our park situation, so.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion second to approve, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion, possible action on appointment of committee to review RFPs received for EMS study. So after our last meeting and knowing that the council wanted to bring in a consultant for EMS services, we need to appoint a committee and what I, my, my train of thought on this is that I want elected officials. I want, I want only elected officials. If we're going to have recommendations on how to spend money here, I think that it's the people that were elected by our citizenry that should be the ones that are making those decisions. So there are going to be three council members and the council members, there, there's other thought in this as well. I wanted representation from the Ad hoc Committee and it's my understanding that Jim and Joyce have agreed that Jim should be the representative from the Ad hoc Committee. I believe also that the EMS Commission needs to be represented on this committee. So Bill Alms is also being recommended for appointment, myself as well, because I represent the city as, at large. But in addition to that, I also believe that we do need to be bringing our municipal partners into this discussion. And because they're part of the service area, they certainly have felt slighted that they have not been part of the process that we've gone through in looking at EMS over the past, what, year and a half, two years probably. So I'm also suggesting that we appoint Stan Wecken from North Hudson, Jeff Johnson from the town of Hudson and Dan Pearson from Town of Troy.
Have you had any contact with those folks and they're all...
Yes, I have. I asked if they'd be willing to do that and they said absolutely, they wanted to step up and participate and they were very thankful that we were considering including them.
Will these interviews be open sessions or closed sessions?
Because of the nature of the makeup, it would be open, open meetings.
Okay, good.
The last time we did something similar was when we hired engineering firms.
Okay.
So it was a mix of council members and staff and they were done as open meetings, so.
Okay. And so then will this committee be dissolved as soon as the consultant has been hired?
I see no reason why they would continue on unless the, the council thought that there was a need for it. Good question though.
Well, we don't have a formal charter for this committee, but it's, it looks pretty straightforward. You said that it would be based on the issue sheet, so I printed up the issue sheet to, and that's pretty clear what we're looking for.
Okay. Anybody else?
And then this will come forward, we do the interview process and then this committee then brings to the council, right?
Right.
For formal, go ahead, right?
Right.
I think it's a good idea to include the partners in it, for sure.
Anybody else? We have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion second to approve, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Anybody, anybody have anything, announcements, future agendas?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, just a huge thank you to everybody that's been working on the Hanley Road project. I haven't heard anything but great things from neighbors. I know that we're just, we're getting close to wrapping up on the project. I just talked to staff about that today, just to see what was left and it's just minuscule things that they have to clean up, but great job.
The engineer, Andrew Olson, indicated, yes, it's just a few punch list items and...
Right.
I've got to agree. I wasn't sure how that was going to work, going from four lanes down to essentially two with a turn lane in the center. I think the islands are working well. I think it all works well with the crosswalks and everything else and I travel that road every day, so.
Well, I'm hearing gratitude from the people who had complained, when are they going to get Hanley fixed?
Right.
They're saying that they're very happy to have it fixed.
Yeah. Alright.
I've got something. My husband has noticed that there are some panhandlers near some of the stores lately and I asked Jeff if there was a, there were any, was any ordinance about panhandling and he said no. I think that that would, might be something to look into and discuss.
Okay. Alright, where does that go on, public safety or, okay? Want to take that up for Andy?
Yeah. It's increasingly more.
I have an item. Tomorrow night is National Night Out and at, starting at five o'clock down in Lakefront Park, our, all of our public safety services will be present and, and just creating a fun opportunity at the same time, sharing the safety information and just pulling the community, one more opportunity to pull the community together.
I think that's a good thing. Give you my notice right now, Jeff. For whatever reason, Rotary always seems to do their golf tournament on the same night or same day and goes into the evening with dinner and stuff, but on Tuesday for golf tournament, figure that out, but. So...
Good talk to them.
Try to get over there afterwards.
There's a dunk tank, isn't there?
Oh, what? A dunk tank?
Big competition.
Yeah?
It's a competition amongst the three chiefs this year, so the EMS chief, the fire chief and myself will be competing for the most funds raised in the dunk tank. So if you come out after seven thirty, you know, take your best shot.
Is that what time it is?
The fire chief, or the EMS chief, I think starts at six forty-five and then...
Oh, you're up.
Fire chief goes in at seven oh five or seven ten, something like that, and then I go in at seven thirty-five.
I will mention that at the Rotary tournament tomorrow.
So after you're done hitting golf balls and eating, come on out and try your hand at throwing a softball.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anybody else?
I have one item and I was out of town, so I missed the last Public Works meeting, so you can steer me in the right direction if this is wrong. The idea from the last agenda, which was the public utilities building and, and trying to look at space for public works in there, I'd like to somehow get that back on the agenda. I missed that discussion, so if there was something that changed at public works.
We did not have, at the last meeting, Kip was not here, as I recall, we wanted him to be here before we brought him in.
Right, right. And we tabled it, which is good.
Have you guys, Public Works?
Oh, you're talking about the Public Works Committee.
Yeah, I, I think as we, now that we have a, a new Public Works Director coming on, the first thing that's going to be happening is we're scheduling a, a meeting for the three public works folks just to see the facilities that we have. Before Tom leaves, he's, he has offered to, to take us on a tour of the, of the facility and I don't know whether, whether Michael will participate in that or not. He may, he'll probably have his own tour with Tom. That'd be my, if I was him, that's what I'd be wanting to, to see. But anyhow, so we have an understanding just of what we have today. And then as Michael comes in, he will have a, certainly is going to have his own ideas about, about direction. So it's a, I, I, that's, that's not off the, that's not off the table. That's just one of, that's one, becomes one of the options as we look at what we have to do there, if we have to do anything, but.
Will other council members be invited to go on that tour? I'd like to see it.
You know, I, I know that, I appreciate that, but I'm not sure that, I, I don't want the group to get so large that we can't have, that we can't have a discussion. I'm not trying to close the meeting off, but I want the, I want the public works to...
You will have to let me know, you'll have to let me know when it is.
It's, it'd be a public, notice me, but I, you know, anybody can attend, but I'm, I'm not going to invite you, I guess. I want us, I want us to really have a really solid understanding of where...
And that's certainly something any council member could schedule at any time with any of the department heads, would be to go and tour the facilities, so.
So, you know, it's, you understand my concern? I just want to, I want us to be able to focus on it and to, to be the prime, the prime question askers and receivers of information because we have to deal with it.
Alright.
If that could be brought back at some point, I guess is what I'm asking.
Absolutely. Alright, anybody else?
The only thing I have is the partisan primary election is next Tuesday, seven AM to eight PM, regular polling places. I did want to mention, and we're going to make sure we tell the people when they take their ballots, but you can only vote in one party, so you have to make that decision before you vote. If you vote for a Republican in one race and a Democrat in another race, the ballot won't be accepted and you get up to three tries to make it work, but I'm just trying to get that information out there. There's, the ballot's two sided and there's about fifty names on there and I know it'll get confusing, but we're just trying to get that information out and they will tell them that when they hand them the ballot, but I just wanted to mention that. So that's, because it's a partisan primary, you're only allowed to vote in one or the other, so. I shouldn't say one or the other, there are actually five different parties, but. And register, you can vote absentee here at City Hall through Friday at five PM.
Anybody else? Alright, discussion, possible action on convening in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub C in nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub F, to consider job performance evaluation data and preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems related to the EMS department.
Move to go into closed session.
Second.
Got a motion second to go into closed session. Roll call.
More set?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
Azil?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Atkins Hackett?
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved. We are now in closed session. Open session, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn, all those in favor?